Welcome to the September 7th, 2023 Regular City Council Meeting. Tonight, we have Pastor Bruce Martin giving the invocation. Welcome.
Thank you. All right, so I have a, just a passage I'd like to read from Jesus contrasting the authority that most people have and the kind of authority as a leader that he recommends we should have, and I want to pray this over you. This is what Jesus said in Mark, Chapter 10. "You know that those who are regarded as rulers of the gentiles lorded over them, and their high officials exercise authority over them. Not so with you. Instead, whoever wants to become great among you must be your servant, and whoever wants to be first must be slave of all. For even the son of man did not come to be served, but to serve, and to give his life as a ransom for many." So I just want to pray this. I just know that many of you serve selflessly as leaders, and that's the best kind of leader, and that's the way Jesus led. So let me pray. Lord, thank you for your leadership style that you gave your life. You served to the last drop of blood. Thank you for giving us that example. And I pray for all who are in authority in this room. Thank you for their selfless service, for their willingness to lay down their lives for this city, and to take countless hours to serve us to make this a better place to live. So God bless them, honor their service. May you notice it. I know that you are taking note of it, even though some may not appreciate it. Lord, I thank you for these public servants and for all the decisions they make day in and day out. Would you guide them? Would you give them wisdom? Would you bless them? And would you help them become more like Jesus who gave his life for us? And we pray in his name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Bruce. Cindy Lee, please do the roll call.
Councilmember Freilich.
Present.
Councilmember Osborne.
Present.
Councilmember Gordon.
Present.
Councilmember Brockert.
Present.
Councilmember Gendrich.
Present.
Councilmember Lewis.
Present.
Councilmember Hopkins.
Present.
Seven present, zero absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. Will you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and next I'll have Zachary Mullen approach the podium. Stand right here. All right. So I'm gonna have you raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I, Zachary Mullen.
I, Zachary Mullen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The constitutions.
The constitutions.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Iowa.
And the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties of police officer.
Discharge all duties of police officer.
In the city of Muscatine.
In the city of Muscatine.
Iowa.
Iowa.
As now.
As now.
Or hereafter.
Or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Congratulations. And I'm going to have you sign. Hopefully the pen works right there. And then after that, I'll have you walk across and shake everybody's hand, and we're gonna picture it here.
Yes, sir.
Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
I'm aboard, Zach.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Welcome to the team.
Oh, I didn't even see the key nine.
I didn't either. Brad, you missed track. She was saying happy birthday to him.
What? Oh, he's not leaving yet.
Oh, okay.
All right, next item is, next is the approval to adopt the agenda. Does the council or administration have any items that you'd like to change or pull from the agenda?
Tonight.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second, Louis.
And a second by Councilmember Louis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next is communications. Is there anyone present that would like to address an issue that is not on tonight's agenda? All right. Next will be the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes items 10A through B, items 11A through E, items 12A through B, items 13A through D, and items 14 with bills totaling $3,260,224.25?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second, Osborne.
And a second by Councilmember Osborne. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Uh, not yet. I'm guessing you're gonna be asking to speak regarding an item? Yep, that's coming up at the end. Yep, you bet. Yeah.
Mayor, I just want to point out that it was A through F on petitions and communications.
A through F? For item 11?
Yes, there's an F.
So should we, okay, so 11A through F? Should we go back and, no, okay. Does everybody acknowledge that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Cindy. All right, we have public hearing. Next is 15A is a public hearing to declare certain real estate owned by the city, 891 West 8th Street and adjacent parcel, as surplus in authorizing the sale of property by sealed bid process. Now is the time for the public to comment. Here or none, I will take a motion to close public hearing.
So moved, Freilich.
We have a motion by Councilmember Freilich. And a second by Councilmember Gendrich. Okay. I didn't know if it was you or Jeff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Next item is 15B. Public hearing on the plans and specifications, cost estimate, and form of contract for the UV replacement project at the water resource and recovery facility. Now is the time for the public to comment. Here or none, I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hopkins.
Second, Louis.
And a second by Councilmember Louis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries with all ayes. Last public hearing is 15C. Is a public hearing on the amendments to the Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Administrative Plan. Now is the time for the public to comment. Here or none, I will take a motion to close public hearing.
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second, Louis.
And a second by Councilmember Louis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries with all ayes. And next is 17A. Is a resolution declaring certain described real estate owned by the city vacant parcel adjacent to the 891 West 8th Street as surplus in authorizing the sale of said certain real estate by the sealed bid process. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Gendrich. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none. Councilmember Louis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Freilich.
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
Gendrich.
Aye.
And Osborne.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is B. Is a resolution approving an easement for the West Hill Sewer Separation Project for Parcel X adjacent to 891 West 8th Street. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Freilich.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Gordon. Is there any discussion with the public? Or council? Here or none. Councilmember Louis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Freilich.
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
Gendrich.
Aye.
And Osborne.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is C. Is a resolution declaring certain described real estate owned by the city, 891 West 8th Street, as surplus in authorizing the sale of said certain real estate by the sealed bid process, which is public hearing A. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brockert.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Gendrich. Is there any discussion with the council? Here or none. Councilmember Louis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Freilich.
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
Gendrich.
Aye.
And Osborne.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is D. Is a resolution approving an easement for the West Hill Sewer Separation for Parcel W, also known as 891 West 8th Street. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Freilich. Is there any discussion with the public? Or council? Here or none. Councilmember Louis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Freilich.
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
Gendrich.
Aye.
And Osborne.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is E. Is a resolution approving the plans, specifications, form of contract, cost estimates, and setting a bid opening for the UV replacement project. And this is public hearing B. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Louis and a second by Councilmember Hopkins. Is there any discussion with the council? Here or none. Councilmember Louis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Freilich.
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
Gendrich.
Aye.
And Osborne.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is F. Is a request to approve an amendment to the Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Administrative Plan. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Gordon.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Osborne. Is there any discussion with council? Here or none. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is G. Is a third and final reading of an ordinance amending nuisance regulations contained within City Code Title IX, Chapter III. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance on third and final reading and to direct for its publication as required by law?
So moved, Freilich.
We have a motion by Councilmember Freilich and a second by Councilmember Gendrich. Is there any discussion with the public? Or council? Here or none. Councilmember Louis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Freilich.
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
Gendrich.
Aye.
And Osborne.
Aye.
Third and final reading of this ordinance is approved as submitted with all ayes. Next item is H. Third and final reading of an ordinance amending Title X, Chapter 20, Section 4 of City Code, which is home occupations. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance on third and final reading and to direct for its publication as required by law?
So moved, Louis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Louis.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Brockert. Is there any discussion with the public? Or council? Here or none. Councilmember Louis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Freilich.
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
Gendrich.
Aye.
And Osborne.
Aye.
Third and final reading of this ordinance is approved as submitted with all ayes. Next item is a second reading of an ordinance amending Title III, Chapter 2 of City Code, use of city right-of-way. Is there a motion to approve the second reading of this ordinance as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gendrich.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Gordon. Is there any discussion with the public? Or council? Here or none. Councilmember Louis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Hopkins.
Aye.
Freilich.
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
Gendrich.
Aye.
And Osborne.
Aye.
Second reading of ordinance is approved as submitted with all ayes. Next item is J. Is a second reading of an ordinance amending Title XI, Chapter IV of City Code, inspections. Is there a motion to approve the second reading of this ordinance as submitted?
So moved, Osborne.
We have a motion by Councilmember Osborne.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Freilich. Is there any discussion with the public? Or council?
Do you have a comment?
Yes.
Um, for all these ordinance changes, I want to thank the staff for working through these. I mean, this is quite a few that they've reviewed and completed over the last few months, so thanks, Jody, to your team, and let them know, please, that we appreciate it. We have to keep moving forward with cleaning up ordinances, so thank you so much.
Any other comments? Here or none. Councilmember Louis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Freilich.
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
Gendrich.
Aye.
And Osborne.
Aye.
Second reading of ordinance approved as submitted with all ayes. Next item is K. Is a second reading of an ordinance amending the airport district zoning ordinance contained within Title X, Chapter 19 of City Code. Is there a motion to approve the second reading of this ordinance as submitted?
So moved, Freilich.
We have a motion by Councilmember Freilich.
Second, Louis.
And a second by Councilmember Louis. Is there any discussion with the public? Or council? Here or none. Councilmember Louis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Freilich.
Aye.
Brockert.
Aye.
Gendrich.
Aye.
And Osborne.
Aye.
Second reading of the ordinance approved as submitted with all ayes. Next item is L. Is a resolution authorizing the execution of a special warranty deed to said described real estate located at 619 Hope Avenue. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Louis.
We have a motion by Councilmember Louis.
Second, Gordon.
And a second by Councilmember Gordon. Is there any discussion with the public? Have you approached the podium? And because there is a list of people with a couple topics, we're gonna give you two minutes, Mr. Kaufman. Name and address, please.
Max Kaufman, 1609 Foster Street, M.A.K. Limited Housing Company, LLC. I was one of two bidders at the sealed bid presentation on August 31st last Friday. My bid was four times plus my competitor. I was unaware of the procedures required by the city, so I asked that the city administrator forward me the procedures. She did so to my office. I have here a copy of the email. I will pass it around. Nowhere in the procedures that she forwarded to me was there a mention of the fact that I needed to include a earnest money check with my sealed bid. Therefore, I did not. I would have been more than happy to had I known. Nor did it mention the fact that I needed to make reference to the city's webpage to find out further details of the procedure, where it is mentioned that I needed to include a cover check. You will find here my...
Max, you have 30 seconds.
Sir?
You have 30 seconds.
I'm sorry. You'll find my letter of bid, and you will find my letter of intent to proceed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Is there any other comments from the public? Any comments from council?
I'd like to, um, I've reviewed some of these items with Max already, and I'll give, and I think council should get, have sufficient time to look at this as well. It's a newer process that we've developed. There's some, obviously, some things that we need to work out. I think it's a great improvement over what we've done in the past. However, I think I would like to propose that we give, um, let's say till next meeting to vote on this, and give staff the opportunity to look at the documentation that Max has provided in compared to these two bids with all the documentation.
Any other comments?
I have a question. Did the other person that bid ask for the city administrator to provide any information, or were they able to find that information? Do you know, Carol?
No one else asked me for information.
Okay.
Any other comments?
So, Carol, um, Mr. Kaufman's bid declined, was declined for, you know, only one bid was responsive, so specifically, were Mr. Kaufman's bid felt short. Can you help me with that?
Sure. The bid, the, the way the bid procedure was written is that it gave preferent, there was no minimum bid set. It was preference given to a nonprofit that could construct a home within 240 days that to be sold to a first-time home buyer that meets certain eligibility requirements as far as income, 80% AMI. Yeah. And so, Mr. Hoffman's bid, it was timely, it, and, but it did not include a plan to construct a home in that manner, and it, he's not representing a nonprofit. So that bid was disqualified on, on those measures. Mr. Hoffman did offer, or I'm sorry, Kaufman, did offer to write an earnest check at the time. Had he met the other preconditions, I would have allowed him to do, do so, yes.
You know, those guidelines, counsel, were all discussed, and consensus was given for the nonprofit and so forth. Counsel's recommendation, correct?
Yes.
Mayor, is that correct, Carol?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, just to weigh in on my vote, because I did vote to support that. At the time, we were discussing about, you know, whether or not we would, you know, have somebody in, in the commercial sector, you know, the probability of that happening. To be able to move forward quickly was, was our main goal. You know, move forward quickly, get it on the tax records, get the property improved, and that was our main goal. Now this word preference, I think we need to work on that. You know, preference to me, when I re, when I was thinking about how I voted on it, meant if we got a couple of bids that are close, within some undefined in my head, 5% or something like that, that's, that's, you know, some little room where we could give preference. So, just sharing my thoughts on what preference means. A bid that's four times greater than the other carries a lot of weight, and it still gets the job done, gets the product, property on, on the tax records and, and improved. It also meets our objective for housing. You know, we've got some housing that is, that, that this bid was targeted towards, and that was our thinking at the time. But we also have a need for market rate housing, and, and in my personal opinion, is we've, we've not done as well there, and this is an opportunity. So, again, I'm not trying to say that we should vote for this tonight. I'm just saying, let's give it a week and, and, you know, give sufficient time to review these records. I think Max is, based on what I've read and what I've talked to Carol about and everything, I think it deserves a serious look, and not just, well, he didn't get his stuff in on time.
Councilmember Gordon.
All right. Thanks, Jeff, for your comments, and, and thanks, Max, for, for the bid and everything. The issue is that we've already brought this to the table once, and we backed it out because things weren't done in the proper sequence. So it was already here a few weeks ago. So we rebid the property, and at that time, the first time, we only had one bidder, one party of interest. So now we have the second bid forward, and not all the boxes were checked. And if we look at the letter with the plan, which is a critical part of this, because we want to turn it quickly, that wasn't received until today, September 7th. It wasn't that it was on August 31st, or, I mean, there has been new things, but I don't want to hold it up. I think we've held it up once already correctly. I think we move forward, and that's just my thoughts, and I think the plan was an important piece. I don't doubt that Mr. Kaufman was, would have had his earnest money right there. He's an honorable man, but I think the plan, we need to, that's one of the check, checked items that we need, so, just my thoughts. Thanks, Jeff.
Any other comments? Here or none. Councilmember Louis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Freilich.
Aye.
Brockert.[1696.71]
No.
Gendrich?
Aye.
Osborne?
No.
Resolution is adopted with five ayes and two nays. Next item is M is a resolution awarding a contract for the vehicle Wash Bay to Bill, to Bill Bruce Builders, Inc., in the amount of $1,295,000. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brockert and a second by Councilmember Gordon. Is there any discussion with public? Is there any discussion with council? Here none. Councilmember Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
And Osborne?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is N is resolution setting a public hearing on September fourteenth of 2023 at 6:00 PM on the plan specifications, cost estimate, cost estimate and form of contract for the downtown revitalization project. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon?
Second. Louis?
And a second by Councilmember Lewis. Is there any discussion with the public or council? Here none. Councilmember Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
And Osborne?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is O is a resolution amending nuisance abatement administrative fee and schedule of permit and licensing requirements in Appendix D of City Code. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution as submitted?
So moved, Freilich.
We have a motion by Councilmember Freilich?
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Gendrich. Is there any discussion with the public or council?
I have some comments or questions.
You bet.
So this is perfect. We need to do this. This is the right thing. But now what we need to do is make sure we clearly communicate the changes and not a simple press release. So we have some frequent, some people that get nuisance charges frequently. I think we need to send them a letter with the new fee schedule and the dates so they're aware. I just want to make sure that the communication out to the public is very clear and that the frequent flyers are well aware, because this is a substantial change. But it takes a lot of work to manage this. So if we can work in a better communication plan.
Yeah, we've discussed it a little bit and yes, we will make sure both for those who have not previously received a nuisance, you know, abatement, to provide them with an opportunity to basically like a warning initially. And then we can notify those who have received one in the past about the change in the fee.
Yeah, because there's quite a few that get it frequently and they're going to be surprised, but it's due. So thanks.
Any other comments, council? Here none. Councilmember Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Hopkins?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Freilich?
Aye.
Brockert?
Aye.
Gendrich?
Aye.
And Osborne?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted with all ayes. Next item is P is a request to enter into a contract in the amount of $5,785 with Johann Umini for artistic work related to the public art installation, Muscatine's World's largest watermelon slice to be installed on the Muscatine Riverfront adjacent to Millennial Plaza. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Osborne and a second by Councilmember Lewis. Is there any discussion with the council? Councilmember Osborne?
I'm not sure who to direct this to, but could someone just kind of go through the process, how we accept a donation for this and how we end up writing a purchase order for it? And so it appears like it's coming out of city funds, but it's coming out of that donation.
Sure.
Maybe I said it all, I don't know.
I'll have Nancy explain the mechanics. Is that what you're looking for of it? Yes.
There's a lot of questions out there about, is this coming out of city funds? And when we write a purchase order, that's all people see, right?
Definitely. It was in a previous meeting that council decided that to move forward on the project with no city funding. But when the city enters into a contract, it has to be approved by city council. We previously approved the agreement with Hoffman for the fabrication. And now it's, that referenced a separate agreement for the artist and we overlooked that when we first looked at it. So this is kind of catching us up with the rest of it. But the funding commitments are there, so there won't be any city funding for this.
Okay. So it ultimately comes from donated funds and then we are doling that out through purchase orders, correct?
Correct, yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is Q is a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order in the amount of $50,827 to Ed Morris Muscatine for the purchase of a three-quarter ton pickup truck for the Water and Resource Recovery Facility Maintenance Department. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved, Osborne.
We have a motion by Councilmember Osborne and a second by Councilmember Gordon. Is there any discussion with council? Here none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is R is a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Ed Morris Muscatine in the amount of $64,047 for the purchase of a three-quarter ton pickup truck with service body for the BioSolids Department at the Water and Resource Recovery Facility. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon and a second by Councilmember Osborne. Is there any discussion with the council? Here none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is S, request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Feldfire in the amount of $279,772 for the purchase order of an ambulance with a power load system. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Brockert?
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Osborne. Yeah, if we could turn off the phones, please, that'd be great. Thank you. Is there any discussion with the council?
I just think this is a good purchase, just to save in our backs. So you guys are out there doing a hard job and anything we can do to save the backs. So thank you.
Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is T is a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order to Titan Machinery in the amount of $131,945 for the purchase of a four-by-four rubber tire backhoe loader. Is there a, a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gordon?
Second, Louis.
And a second by Councilmember Lewis. Is there any discussion with council? Here none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next is a request to approve the issuance of a purchase order in the amount of $78,775 to Bushman Excavating and Pavement Crushing. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Gendrich?
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Freilich. Is there any discussion with council?
I have a question. Where is the work going to be done, Brian?
Good evening. This work will be done in the lower lot of Public Works off of Washington Street where we typically do it. They'll mobilize in there, all the materials there, they'll crush it, separate it, make it a new stockpile. It all, it all happens behind the fence there.
Okay, so we've done dust mitigation and the whole nine yards.
Yeah, we're down there by the creek, so we don't really have that problem. There's no real neighbors there. So yeah, we've done this in the past with no issues. We, I don't expect any of this time either.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Here none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Request is approved with all ayes. Next item is V is a request to approve a purchase agreement between the city of Muscatine and Muscatine County and J and S Dare Farms LLC, who is the seller, in the amount of $420,000 for the purchase of real estate described in Exhibit A for the use of law enforcement, shooting range, and training facility. Is there a motion to approve this request as submitted?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hopkins?
Second, Louis.
And a second by Councilmember Lewis. And at this point, is there any discussion with the public? Now, I know that there's a couple of people that walked in late. Is there any, do you guys want to sign up to, to be on the list at all or?
Let's do the list first.
Okay, well, we'll have everybody come in, come up individually that signed up. So the first one is going to be Laura Kramer. So Laura, name, address, and we're going to give you two minutes.
Laura Curtis Kramer, 1670 North Mulberry Road. Two points. One is that we agree that training is needed for the police officers. We agree with that. We just don't think it's the right area. Where it's proposed to be placed is a quiet country neighborhood, lots of residents, farming area, and we think it should be located in more of a commercial area. Secondly, the price seems extremely high for the taxpayers. I don't know if anyone's familiar with federal acquisition regulations, but they kind of provide guidelines on how much you pay for things and what you can agree to. And most of it's based on fair and reasonable pricing competitiveness and based on the average selling price per acre in Muscatine County, which was about $11,698. And this proposal is for $21,000 an acre. That seems extremely high for the taxpayers to pay that much money. So I don't agree with it and I think everybody here would agree that we're paying way too much money for this land.
Thank you, Ms. Kramer. Next is John Kramer. Mr. Kramer, name and address, please.
Hello, my name's John Kramer. I live at 1670 North Mulberry. Thank you for having me. I'm against and oppose this. We try to live out in the country, to live a peaceful life. There's already a trap shooting establishment that is about maybe one mile from where I'm at. And that was supposed to be only shot on Tuesdays and Saturday mornings and it has escalated into more days now that high schools are going out there and shooting. So my days have been disrupted. On Memorial Day weekend, they shot trap out there all four days. It starts usually at 3:00 PM and it doesn't end until about 10:00 PM. And that's a lot. And it's Saturday morning from 8:00 AM to noon. And then Wednesdays now have been added. So my concern is the noise pollution. My quality of life is going to go downhill. I'm also opposed to it because of the property value and what they're paying for that and what it's going to do to my property, which could increase its value. But it's going to decrease my, my value just based on the noise out there. So I oppose this 100%. And it's, it's so disruptive. I can't have like outings or anything because people are trying to talk and the noise is so loud. And this is just going to add to it. It's only a mile, one mile farther away from where they already shoot trap, maybe one and a half. So this is not helping me. And I also feel that they should utilize other areas, like my wife said, that already exist, down at JR B, down at Muscatine Power and Water. There's already another facility not far from where they wanted to do this that the police already shoot at. It's down a dirt road. So I don't know why we don't utilize this. I was also brought to my attention by the supervisors.
Thirty seconds.
At that, I'm sorry, is my time up?
Nope, you've got thirty seconds, go ahead.
Oh, okay. That, I kind of lost my train of thought because of that.
Supervisors.
County supervisors.
I forgot where I was going though. He told me that they were going to shoot 40 times a year. And I know that's probably a starting number because I have a feeling that they're going to start bringing in other establishments to use this new facility if it is approved, which I'm hoping it's not, because that's just going to cost, or not cost, but interfere with my quiet country living. So with that, that's all I have at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer.
Thank you.
And next is Christine Schroder, Schrader. Name and address, please. And we'll give you two minutes.
Christine Schroder, 2400 155th Street. I live directly behind the Isaac Walton League, so I listen to the shooting constantly. I did not get a notice when they did that whole procedure because I'm not 500 feet close to it, but I can see it out my back door, my bedroom windows. The lights shine till 10 o'clock at night. Tuesday afternoon, I was sitting on my porch trying to talk to my son. And I've even, I'm sorry, I'm not good at this. I recorded it and it's bang, 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 pull, bang. You can hear people talking and I am proposed or opposed to adding to that. Plus the ground that they're building on is top-quality crop ground. So there goes more farm ground, you know, to a big building, more shooting. It looks like it's a huge facility from what I see, that they're building a 60-by-60 facility, parking lot, sidewalk, berms behind it. And so, you know, I just, there's other places to do this besides the country. And it is a nuisance. And if you look up nuisance ordinance, it does affect my life. And Saturday morning at 9:30, they were shooting and it's supposed to start at 10:00. So they do not follow their guidelines at the Isaac Walton League. Yeah, it's just a nuisance. So I oppose. Sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Schroder. And next we have Bill Clevenger. Mr. Clevenger, we'll give you two minutes. Name and address, please.
Bill Clevenger, 2516 150th Street, Moscow. I live in the same section where that's going to be built. I have livestock. I have cows running in pastures all over that section. And we're talking about some serious hazards, ricochets, stray bullets, lead, and the noise. These are serious hazards. And I oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we have Carla Clevenger. Name and address in two minutes, please.
Carla Clevenger, 2516 150th Street. I totally oppose it. It's not a prob, a property to build a shooting facility without having protection for the people that are going down the roads, gravel roads on either side, and people having big guns. It's just not the place to have it. It's a hard surface road. It's just not the place to put it protection-wise and we're back there a lot and our animals are back there. So it's dangerous. And there's the horse farm nearby, pig farms. It's agriculture, big time agriculture in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clevenger. And next we have Aaron Stephens. Name and address in two minutes, please.
Got it. Aaron Stephens, 2528 150th Street, Moscow, right next to Clevengers. This is being proposed to be built basically in my backyard. Highly opposed of this. We are not that far away from it. We have animals out there as well. We have cattle, we have horses. I've got four kids out there. We are always running out there through the timber. I own 16 acres out there. My property butts up to the conservancy, nature conservancy, and the conservancy butts up to this piece of property. Taking away cropland is a huge deal, right? We, we don't have that much cropland left and now we're going to take away another 50 acres wherever it's proposed. Like Laura said, the value of this property, of the which guys paid for it or whoever's paying for it, is way out of line. It's a nuisance, so I didn't move out to the country to have a nuisance on my hands. This will decrease our property value big time if we ever wanted to sell, if we ever want to borrow against our home to make an improvement. Our property value will not be there anymore. It will drop. You guys, not you guys, sorry. The county has raised our taxes a lot, just like everywhere else. This is proposed to be, I believe, a $2 million facility. Correct me if I'm wrong. Just a lot of money to be spending when you guys could use a different place. Like they said, the Walton League is down the street. There was another one, F-70, as of recent that was being used by law enforcement. If you guys are shooting high-powered guns, I'm all for protection and I think you guys need a training facility. I do not believe it needs to be in this area. And the last thing I got to say is-
You have thirty seconds.
Thank you. Taking away cropland is one thing. Now you're going to take away land that could be used for building homes. There's already a huge issue with building home out in the country. You have to have so many acres, right? You have to be so far away from your neighbors. I believe this is really close to the neighbors up there and we have a housing shortage everywhere. So now we're going to take away more land to build a gun range and we could be building houses or we could keep farming it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ted Dickey. Name, address, and we'll give you two minutes.
Ted Dickey, 1744 Tipton Road. We're going to be right in the corner of the two shooting ranges. I try not to go home on Tuesdays and Wednesdays now to the farm because I'm, just can't stand listening to it all the time. I really think they need the training facility. I just think there's better places. I really think they need the training facility. I just think there's better places. I found out today that there's a rifle range out by Nichols that's in Muscatine County. There should be something checked out on that before we go doing all this other. Also, the land deal looks to me like it's a pretty hairy situation because the gentleman that owns it now bought it a year and a half ago, paid thirteen-six for it, and now he's turning around a year and a half later selling it for twenty-one thousand when his grandfather sells a lot of guns legally to all the law enforcement here in town. It looks to me like it's a very underhanded deal, like it was set up. They traded land with another farmer to make sure to get that property. It looks pretty underhanded. That's all I need to say.
Thank you, Mr. Dickey. Next is Tim Maxwell. Name, address, and two minutes.
My name is Tim Maxwell, fourteen forty-four North Isit, Moscow, Iowa. I farm ground on the north, east, and south of this proposed site. I have six family members that own dwellings just north and east of this proposed site. So, I have a lot of interest on what's going on in my neighborhood. As everybody stated, they've stated the facts about children, livestock. As we all go abide by, which I've been to the boards of zoning to try to build a house several years ago, we got denied. There's a number that they said that we had, that we couldn't build on because it was higher than fifty-five. That's the corn suitability rating for land. This particular land is eighty-eight CSR. So, that's ri- ground that shouldn't be used for development, for a shooting range, even to build a house on, basically. So, uh, as I think Moose said, which is my neighbor, uh, said that, uh, you know, you gotta have twenty acres. Yeah, they got the twenty acres. They've tried to purchase it at an outrageous price. If I had all my land, I wanna reappraise all my ground I own. If I can get twenty-one thousand an acre for it, my, my net is gonna look pretty darn good at the bank. But, uh, it's not gonna happen. It was purchased a year ago, or half, year and a half, I think, Ted, at thirteen thousand six hundred, and they're proposing to buy it at twenty-one thousand an acre. Outrageous. Definitely opposed it, and as all my neighbors are too. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Crackle. Name, address, and we'll give you two minutes.
My name is Todd Crackle, twenty-five oh-five one hundred and fifty-fifth Street. I am direct- directly west of that ground, within a thousand feet. My property goes to the edge of that, and then there's twenty ninety acres in between there. I have grandchildren that come out there all the time, so they're gonna be very close to all this. Like everybody said, we listen to the ICS, which was there when I bought my place. I have no qualm in that. But I do not need a shooting range next to me that's gonna be at nighttime training. I have a, my fiancee, she has MS. She lives with me. We have dogs. We're thinking about getting some livestock eventually when I retire, and you guys are gonna cut me short on being able to do stuff on my property, being next door to that, directly next door. There's only twenty-nine acres in between there, which you guys got a purchase option to get that eventually if you'd like to, which puts me right up to that property line. I am an avid hunter. I bow hunt. What do you think that's gonna do to me? That is why I bought this property, to enjoy the outdoors, the nature, and to have peace and quiet. And the purchase price is outrageous. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, next is Fred, and, um, Fred Satterthwaite. I apologize. Fred, name and address, and we're gonna give you two minutes.
My name is Fred Satterthwaite, uh, sixteen twenty-four North Tipton Road. My farm is, uh, fifteen hundred and fifty feet from this property. My house is two thousand feet from it. It's a century farm. The house was built in eighteen eighty-nine. My great-grandmother was born in that house. I'm opposed to the noise and, uh, like everybody else, but there's some other things. The lead contamination. Uh, there's a law enforcement shooting range in Arizona that's a half-acre, and they had to spend three-point-seven million dollars to clean that up. This'll have to be done one day. And, uh, so the city and the county will be, uh, on the hook for that. One of the things is, uh, the necessity for training. Is it worth, uh, over two million dollars? Which what we've been told by the supervisors. An active shooter, uh, training, you're not gonna get that good a training by going out and shooting at paper targets or steel targets or whatever. Something like that should be done in a school after hours or some building without ammo and, uh, training on logistics and communication and clearing room to room. Going out and shooting paper targets, I'm pretty sure these police officers are all very good marksmen. As a matter of fact, they probably all own AR-15s and know how to use them. The other thing is, AR-15 is a very loud gun. Most of them have sixteen-inch barrels.
Thirty seconds.
Most of them have sixteen-inch barrels. They're sub, uh, supersonic ammo that makes a loud crack. And, uh, it's a lot louder than a shotgun. So, there's a lot of other issues, but those are the two that I don't think we covered before. But I think we need to look into the environmental impact a little more because there's a lot of lead going in the ground, and there's lead dust, too. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And the last is Charlie Lewis. Mr. Lewis, name and address, please.
Uh, Charlie Lewis. I live at one-twelve Van Horn Street here in Muscatine. But I own twenty-nine acres that is directly behind where the proposed shooting range is. So, they will be firing directly into my timber. I have teenage kids. There, we camp out there. We bought this property ten years ago to get away from the city, have some peace and quiet, um, he, with the intentions of building a house out there eventually, a retirement home when we downsize and to spend the rest of our lives out there. The issue I have with it is my kids are out there all the time. Accidental discharges, I know it's not a common thing. It does happen. I would hate to see anything like that happen to my kids. Um, one of the other issues is under the Resource Conservation Recovery Act for the lead, uh, um, lead contamination, they allow civil lawsuits if something comes up later in the lead. So, the county and the city would be responsible for these lawsuits. It's under the Clean Water Act also, so it could end up costing the city and the county a lot more money in the long run if there's no lead mitigation plan in, in place and the spent bullets are being taken care of out of the soil. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Anyone else from the public? I'll have you approach the podium, and, uh, I'll have you state your name and address, and you'll get two minutes.
Um, thank you for having me up here. My name is Kylie Shepherd. I live at fifteen eighty-nine North Isit Avenue, Muscatine, Iowa. Um, we are directly east. I live with my parents. My parents own the property right now. Um, but we have poultry out there and a bunch of stuff that get very scared by already the gunshots that come out. Um, they have trouble laying eggs when that happens, and, um, i- it's super bad. But I just wanna let you know that the property that they're building on is the most beautiful property you can ever imagine from my house. When that sun sets, it's like God touches your heart. I lived in the city for a really long time, and we finally moved out here a mu- a year ago. I love Muscatine. I love your guys' area. I'm from Johnson County. I don't live in Johnson County, I live in Muscatine, but I went to school for policing. Um, I'm not a police officer. I'm not a certified officer in any means or anything like that. I wanna let you know that I lived next to one of these before. It is the most contaminating, like wake up in the middle of the night from shooting, just all of this stuff everywhere. I wanna let you know that all of our, my neighbors are out here right now. We're all against this because it is country life. We don't want this city stuff. We don't want the shootings. We don't want anything out there. There's, w- where I live, there was horns, all that stuff that went off when the range was open or the, even the training facility was open. I live next to the training facility up in Waterloo. It was loud. It was not quiet. It was ugly building. Please let this be farmland. Please, just let it be farmland. Please plead nay to day. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment? Name and address. And you'll have two minutes.
Pardon?
Name and address, and you'll have two minutes.
Ed Lindell. I live at sixteen ninety-two Lindell Avenue. I have a farm at sixteen sixty-eight. It's centrally located between the two, well, the range that's there now and the one that they're proposing. The noise and everything is a big deal, but I think that the council needs to consider the number of houses and livestock in that area for the, for the rifles and the shooting that's gonna be going on. All my neighbors are all for training, okay? I think we have sand pits. We have bottom grounds. We have plenty of places with a lot less number of people and houses to put a facility like this. We want those guys to be the best they can be. Trust me, all of us. We all agree. Not there.
Thank you, Mr. Lindell, and I think I had a, saw a hand over here. Name and address in two minutes.
Mike Marston, twenty-four eighty-four one-fiftieth Street, Moscow, Iowa. Uh, I am probably directly west or northwest of this facility. One thing that hasn't been mentioned, just to give you a visual, there's Todd Crackle's house. There's a shooting range, and there's that, behind that is a conservatory. Along the front is drainage, which the county just dug all out last year. Made it about six or seven foot deep for water to run down through there. It's gonna be running perpendicular to that same property where they're gonna have lead contamination, and the water table is high there. In other words, there are certain areas there that have water standing in them right now. Even with the hot weather and everything, there's water in there. And, uh, of course, the noise. We all know about the noise. And, uh, basically, it's the lead contamination, and the distance between houses just isn't safe. There's houses within a thousand yards for, and these, and these HR, uh, fifteens that you're gonna be shooting have sixteen-inch barrels on them. And the training facility requires, they say, you know, they're only gonna shoot so much, but like it was brought up at our meeting the other night, a sniper needs to shoot every day. So, there will be somebody out there every day shooting a sniper rifle. So, I, I'm, I'm, I'm against it, and I hope you guys understand that. This is, i- it's, it's pretty, basically. And the, and their, uh, expl- explanation of wanting this property is because it is convenient. We're off of a blacktop road, and i- i- it's just, it's a two-million-dollar playground, is what we're looking at.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? You're, I was gonna, you already had two minutes, Mr. Stephens. Yep, only two minutes. Anybody else? Counsel? Any comments from counsel?
Your honor?
Yes.
I, I grew up in the country. I'm a dairy farmer's daughter from Wisconsin. I know what noise and weather and all sorts of things do to animals, and I, I, you know, I know what you're going through. I feel for you. I know that animals like peace and quiet and sometimes a little bit of Glenn Miller on the radio, but I, I, I hear you.
I'd like to hear from the chief, if we could, on some, I, I know he's been taking notes, and I'd like to know a little bit more from our side of the story as far as the police department goes.
Uh, sure. So, I was probably more prepared, I would say, the sheriff and I for tomorrow's meeting, which will be at ten forty-five, and that's with the zoning commission. A lot of these questions will be laid out. A lot of what you heard tonight is, um, of course, worst-case scenario and things that haven't even been discussed. I have reached out to a couple here that I could get ahold of to come meet me at the station and go through the layout and procedures to put in place, times we'd shoot. And so, we would be more than willing to work with people to be the best neighbors we can. We do need a place to train. There is no place in this county where you're not gonna affect residents that live as far away as some of these people live here. They're not in their backyard. We're talking fifteen hundred, twenty-five hundred, three thousand feet away. So, we had a vetting process to vet this ground prior to a year and a half ago with MSA to pick out locations that were suitable for this training facility. I am very aware that people don't want this in their backyard, and I feel that. But we have to have a training facility someplace where we can train these men and women in the county and in our city. Do you have any questions that weren't answered?
Councilmember Gendrich, and then we have councilmember Osborne.
It's, it might be, uh, well, it was brought up by several of the citizens, so I wanna ask, is it mo- is most of your, um, training ammunition jacketed bullets? Is there a lead, uh, poisoning problem with a copper jacketed bullet?
There's not a lead poisoning problem that we have. We just mitigated a range, which you were all part of that. When you close a range in the state of Iowa, you have to do lead mitigation. So, there is lead contamination to the soil, per se, but as long as it's a shooting round, NRA practices is what you follow for your lead mitigation, and when you close it, that is correct. That lead in that ground has to be mitigated. This facility, being two million dollars, isn't a facility I see closing anytime soon, but we will have procedures in place with the agreement when the land is finalized on how we would go ahead and mitigate that lead.
And then comment on the safety? We heard comments about, you know, ricocheting shots and safety and-
So, I think the, the best thing that I can provide is that tomorrow's meeting at ten forty-five, you'll hear from the city engineer, and you'll hear from Captain Urrack, and he'll speak to you about bullet trajectory, where the gun has to point to even reach a certain amount of distance to make it happen. We're talking thirty feet over the berm to reach places, not just over the berm. Noise mitigation, I understand completely, but there's a process in place for these berms. NRA has guidelines. We're exceeding these guidelines triple some on this, on these berms. This berm won't be filled in dirt with concrete and tires. This will be a dirt berm. There's a lot that's gone into this and a lot of engineering, so this isn't something that's ad hoc to be thrown in. This won't be an eyesore, and we sure won't be shooting on any holidays. I'll promise you that.
Councilmember Osborne, then we have councilmember Brock. Oh, you have another one. I'm sorry, councilmember Gendrich.
Yeah, you've already, you've commented, uh, chief, about the search for another area, but I guess maybe I'm looking for something even more so about, you know, vacant buildings and use and, and, uh, you know, other, other ground that, you know, where, where all have you specifically looked? And, and, you know, man, uh, you know, you may, maybe think, you know, I've already told you this, councilmember Gendrich. We already told you this. But, uh, how about some reassurance of some kind? You know, you've really exhausted all the areas that could possibly be used.
So, tomorrow at ten forty-five as well, I do not have those slides in front of me, but you'll see the search criteria that MSA used, whether it's distance from certain facilities, a certain distance from cities, a certain distance from historical ground, a certain distance from houses. And so, when all that comes into play with a north and south range for a safety factor as well, it pushed us to an identified areas of, it might have been ten or fifteen areas that were identifiable. And so, one of our search criterias was convenience and closer to town and closer to the sheriff's department. That is true. And so, with the people that were called in this process- And so with the people that were called in this process, I really had one person that would separate ground off. We could buy eighty acres, but that's not going to help us in the search for this ground. So I had one person that responded that said, yes, I would look at separating off some acres. One. And I called many more than one.
Hey, please, order. Councilmember Genrich, any other?
That's it. Sorry, mayor.
You're fine, you're fine. Councilmember Osborne, and then we'll do councilmember Brockett.
I think John covered some of my questions. You heard about Isaac Walton facility. Can you do some comparisons on how this facility might differ from that as far as the, you know, the heights of the berms, noise mitigation, anything like that?
I don't even know if Isaac Walton has a berm. They shoot in the air. Is there a berm? We don't, we don't shoot in the air. Natural hill. So what you're hearing is concerned people with noise mitigation, and they've been told that they wouldn't hear this all the time, and so now they're hearing from a chief and a sheriff that's saying the same thing, which they've been lied to before, or definitely wasn't followed, and I understand that. I would wish that the board, the zoning board, if approved tomorrow, would hold the county and the city to the agreements that, hey, you said you weren't going to shoot more than thirty times, or forty times. Now I hear we're shooting a year. I can show you records that say we don't shoot that many times. We don't shoot on holidays. There's no reason to shoot past ten o'clock because it gets dark at six-thirty in the fall. I've been on the SWAT team for twenty years. Have we shot nighttime shoots? Yes. I'm looking to be, have the communication where if we had these times that we needed to shoot at night, that we would communicate that, make sure there isn't things going on. This is a law enforcement-only training facility, and I do not look to bring in the state patrol. I do not look bringing in any other agencies to create more shooting and more noise pollution for the citizens. There was a range that all the law enforcement used to shoot at. That is correct. They no longer shoot there. And in all the years we shot there, I don't know if there was one complaint called in to Muscatine County about the noise complaints on that piece of ground that the state patrol, the sheriff's department, and the police department shot at for years. Now that, now they don't, they don't shoot there anymore, and that piece of ground is about a mile and a half away from where this is at.
Council, yes.
I, I just, I can provide some detail to councilmember's Genrich's question if you'd like me to. If not, that's okay, too.
Of course you can. Yes, and then, and then we'll do councilmember Brockett then.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry, we're going to do...
Carol first? Well, I, I just pulled up the report and some of the, the screening criteria they use, and these are just some of the examples, but proximity to municipalities, proximity to hog operations, wetlands and flood plains, drive time from the police department, roadway access, proximity to archaeological sites, proximity to existing wells, proximity to dwellings, proximity to other amenities. That, so there was a list of those types of criteria, and when the consultant overlaid the different restrictions, this is one of a handful of parcels that met the requirements, if, if that's helpful at all.
Councilmember Brockett.
Yeah, many of you mentioned the Isaac Walton League, how they had some sort of an agreement. They were only going to shoot certain days, certain times, and it's increased. Has anyone ever called your supervisor and said, hey, this is going on. We want it stopped?
No worse times.
No worse times, and it hasn't?
I think the biggest problem is you get the chief.
Have you, have you be at the speaker, please?
In the first...
I'll have you approach the podium, please. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lindell.
Yes, myself. Myself and neighbors have called them.
Mm-hmm.
And our, our biggest beef is we have two facilities that you can physically see them, okay?
Mm-hmm.
I think you can spread this out. I personally, if they only need to shoot however many times a year, two million dollars facility, taxpayer money, your money, our money. I mean, they've covered, we've covered everything. Property taxes. Our property taxes aren't going to go down. Would you enjoy living in a place and have your property taxes go up?
I did. I did.
You have, you have two ranges. We will physically have two ranges that you can see. If you stand in the middle, you'll see that one, and you see the other one up on the hill. And Isaac Walton, yes, they've, we all kind of agree, too. They've invited the trap shooting for schools.
Mm-hmm.
How do you deny that? I think that's one of their days that they've added. But they're, they're there a lot.
Yeah, and it's, it's...
I think that one was pushed through much like this. I was more upset about this communication of this whole thing. You've known about it for how long?
About this range, trying to build one for this.
This range.
Working on this for two and a half years, not particularly this property.
Right. How much of the public here knows about it?
Never.
I'm assuming you guys have.
All right, second warning.
Me personally, yesterday, I mean, we have Facebook. You can get information to anybody in a hurry. I'm sure you've all used it. I mean, seriously, we all have just heard about it. Your communication has to start a year and a half ago.
Councilmember Brockett, good.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Lindell.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And councilmember Gordon?
After, is Nadine?
No.
She...
No, I'm finished. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, Chief Keys.
Hello.
So my first question is, can you tell us where the planning meeting is tomorrow? Which location?
Tomorrow, I think it's, is it four fourteen? It's in the county board.
Oh, is it four fourteen?
Yep.
Down in the main room on the first floor?
Correct.
Okay, it's going to be pretty tight. Secondly, this is a very tough one. I have total respect, appreciation, and support for our police and sheriff. I mean, I trust you guys. I know you've been working on this quite a while. You've done your due diligence. I don't doubt that at all. But we've had fourteen people here with heartfelt request and concerns about this facility. So we're going to have to balance that. I mean, yes, I want a training facility. I want to give you that training and the sheriff, but we've got neighbors here that's around it. This is a very tough call. So I'm hoping that we don't vote today, that we hear what the planning and zoning offers up, but it's going to be a tough one. You guys are the heart and soul of Muscatine. You protect us, but we might have to do something else. Just my thought.
Anybody else got something?
I'd like to make a motion that we table this till after the planning zoning meeting, till the next, next regular city council meeting, so we can discuss this.
There's a motion on the table, second by councilmember Hopkins.
Can I make a comment first before we go into a...
Now we can do a discussion, yes.
Sorry.
You're fine.
I think it's important that our, the people that are protecting us have time to practice.
Okay.
I know even as an individual with my own handgun, I have to take time to practice. I am also a farm girl, so I definitely understand. And we had twenty-eight acres, of which we had cows. Cows were okay with the guns. Chickens were not. I don't know who was talking about chickens, but I get that. So the chickens quit laying eggs, so I understand that. But I do have to say, I agree with Peggy. It's, it's a hard call. It's, it's, I understand both sides, and we need both sides. I'm a farm girl. It's like, I totally get the value of, of the farmland. I won't go down that rabbit hole, but, so I definitely understand. I think I agree with what Peggy was saying. I think we need to take a breath. I want to hear what the zoning has to say before I vote on this, so.
See, Mr. Webb.
Can I give you some direction for order?
Sure.
So you have a motion on the tape to lay this item on the table to appoint a definite, right, correct?
Till next council.
That motion is not debatable, so I would suggest you vote on that motion, and if it fails, then come back to the original motion to have a debate about it.
So it's not debatable? Okay.
Not to, not to lay it on the table.
Okay.
So you've got a mo, do you have a second?
Yeah, we already had an initial and a second, so...
Okay.
All right, because it's a request, all in favor signify by saying aye, and maybe show a hand.
I think you do roll call vote.
Yep.
It's a request.
You can do either. It's a your privilege.
Okay, we'll do a roll call then.
And this is the table.
This is to delay the vote, mayor.
Delay the vote.
To appoint certain, which is, can you want to state?
Next council meeting.
September fourteenth.
Yes. Councilmember Lewis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Aye.
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 All right. Motion is to table that to, until the county's done.
Okay, so we will, we will move this forward to the September fourteenth meeting, and at that time, we can, and, and probably Breyer, actually, will give you an update on the discussion and the decision of the zoning commission.
Great.
The county zoning commission.
Thank you. All right. Next item is W, is a review and discussion of proposed amendment number two to the development agreement with R.L. Fridley Theaters, Inc. and Fridley Properties, LLC.
So moved.
Oh, there's no decision.
Yeah, there's, there's no voting on this one.
This is a discussion item, so let me give you...
I knew someone was going to do that.
Let me give you a little background. So typically, we have a proposed amendment to the Fridley Development, Development Agreement, which if, I can give a recap. Is everybody familiar with the Fridley Development? That's the theater, which has its own sort of tax rebate associated with it, and then that also includes outlaw developments. There's a handful, I don't remember exactly how many, that also come with a tax incentive if they were to develop. So the, the request from Fridley is to amend the agreement to allow for a higher percentage of a rebate in the final years of their, of their TIF district, their TIF agreement. TIP, when council originally approved this agreement, I believe they allowed for, how many years on the out, you want to come up, Nancy?
Twenty-six.
They, the, the agreement had two components, percent of rebate over a certain number of years, and, and then capped at a maximum rebate. Because the development has been slow out there, they are requesting for a higher percentage, but no change of the maximum amount. So we are, we are going to come to council next week with a recommendation that council do that. I think it's in the best interest of economic development to do so, and I don't believe we will still reach the maximum of what council's initial intentions were as far as a rebate. So we, typically, we bring this to an in-depth. We didn't have time on this. We wanted to give you an opportunity to ask questions. I think Nancy did a pretty good job on the materials that were included, so if you don't have any grave concerns, we will bring this back for a vote at the next meeting. Okay.
I, I would just add that the intent with the increase, to increase it from fifty percent to seventy-five percent, then Fridley would be able to incentivize developers of those lots. So it's, they haven't developed. I think it's in the best interest of both the city and Fridley's if those lots develop, and increasing this percentage should assist in that.
Just, I just generally kind of need some head nod or two.
Does anybody agree with that? All right.
Okay, we'll bring that forward for an official action next, next week.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Lewis, is there anything you'd like to share tonight?
I just have two things to share. There's, as most of you know, I'm part of the Christian Motorcycle Association. There's several rides going on this week. There's one up in Long Grove. It's the CVMA ride, so just be mindful of the bikers that are out there. And second, it's the week of the Psyhawk game, so go Hawkeyes. I know my councilmember Genrich is down there, so we'll see who wins, right? So, all right, that's all. Thank you, mayor.
Councilmember Hopkins?
I have nothing, sir.
Councilmember Gordon?
I just want to mention something. Thanks you guys for coming. But another thing is, school started, and I've sort of been witness to a couple accidents, one in person and then one as a side, and I just want to alert people, please be cautious. Please drive safely. Please look around and watch for pedestrians and cars. It's no reason, that extra five minutes is not going to be a problem. Take your time. I appreciate the, the PD for responding to the one on Mulberry. They were very quick, but let's just take the time to get there safely. So I just wanted to bring that up, and another thing is, I wish we could show the support when we have a swearing-in, because it's amazing. You got to see something tonight. When we see the firefighters and the PD here as a new officer with swearing-in, we don't show the camera, but it's, it's an amazing thing to see, so.
I agree. Councilmember Fraley?
Nothing to add, your honor.
Councilmember Brockett?
I, I'm going to infringe upon councilmember Osborne's activities, but Fruitland Fund Day is Saturday. There's going to be a pancake breakfast put on by the volunteer fire department, and I know they can use the funds. Lions will be selling pies for twelve dollars apiece for a fundraiser, and there's going to be a car show, and there's going to be a certain sixty-six Chevy SS convertible down there that very rarely gets out of the garage.
What kind of pie?
Any kind you want.
I got to ask.
Round ones.
Or something.
My favorite.
Councilmember Genrich?
I do. Comment to the gallery that spoke on the gun range situation. Impressed that no one had notes. No one had a canned package of six or seven people coming up and reading a three-minute speech that had already been written out for you. So I respect that. This is a terribly difficult decision. And I want to also talk about the Isaac Walton League, because I shoot out there on Tuesday nights, and I have a really good time. I, I, I enjoy camaraderie with a hundred and ten guys, twenty, some years, twenty-one, twenty-two teams, you know? And all well-behaved, respectful sportsmen that love trap shooting and appreciate having that facility. So the direction that I'm trying to make with my comments, I think, is just to say, to be impressed with the way you guys presented yourselves. I'm also impressed with the quality of the trap shooting range at the Isaac Walton League because it's a wonderful place to shoot, a privilege to be able to do that in the United States of America. And, you know, the, I've already said, you know, the difficulty of this decision, you know, and so forth, but no one had notes, you know? Anyway, thanks, mayor.
That, councilmember Osborne?
I'd just like to add to John's comments. Just thank you for coming out. You know, your activism did make a difference here tonight, you know? I, I mean, it may be a similar outcome next week, who knows, but I hope you go to the meeting tomorrow to listen with an open mind. Keep in mind that, you know, this is always going to be not in my backyard, and we do need to support our police officers. We do need to give them the training they need. I think, I see a lot of heads agreeing with that. And I, oh, I, I, I don't, again, I just appreciate you all coming out. I really do. You made a difference. Max, I like to encourage private investment in this community. I hope you're not too discouraged tonight, that we keep working on this together. We are making this process better. If you think back more than a year or so ago, you lost a bid back then. It was not as good a process then. It's a little bit better now. Let's continue to keep working together and make this better so that we can continue to encourage private investment in this community. And on a lighter note, some activities this weekend in a town that always has so much to do. I'm going to highlight just a few. We got a community block party at the Environmental Learning Center this, tomorrow at five-thirty PM. We've got a tailgate party for the Iowa, Iowa, well, to watch Iowa State win this weekend.
Thank you. I forgot to mention that.
At Calvary Church, so, you know, God bless that. And Saturday morning, I'm, I'm looking for four volunteers if I could pitch. We're going to build a ramp at a, at a place through rebuilding together as part of, we'll have breakfast at the, at Calvary Church at seven-thirty, so... so I'll, I'll give you a breakfast if you come, help me build a, a ramp, so I just need at least four folks to come show up for that, so Saturday morning at 7:00 AM for breakfast, we'll take off about 8:30 to go build that ramp.
Go Hawks.
Wow, you get this. It's getting... City Minister Web.
Yes, I just wanted to remind council and let the public know that council will be having a regular meeting and an in-depth meeting next week, and there will not be a meeting September 21st. This is due to a statewide conference that city administrators and council members attend conflicts with the meeting on the 21st, so the order of business that night will be, first, the regular meeting where council takes official action, and that will be followed by an in-depth session where council, council discusses policy issues.
Perfect, thank you. I'd also like to thank the group also for coming and speaking, I know it takes quite a bit to do this, and I can tell you, everything you guys mentioned, this guy back in the corner was taking notes and writing everybody's name down as well, and I know it's a pretty tough process, and also, I'd like to wish our chief a happy birthday tomorrow, so...
Thank you.
Thirty years old. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.